Good afternoon. I call the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Johnson County Community College to order for August 2016. Please help me start the meeting by joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is a roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Slade?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Roberta Ebbeslage, and Chris Rosell.
The next item is our open forum. The open forum is a section of the board agenda each month for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of speakers have signed up, in which case the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals asked to sign in before the meeting is started. Speakers are expected to be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting to matters that concern personnel issues or matters that are being otherwise addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes or otherwise under consideration by the board. I know we have one speaker tonight who has signed up, Chris Rosell. Chris, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Musial, members of the board, Mr. President, members of the administration, members of the faculty, administration, and students, and other members of the community. My name's Chris Rosell. I'm a student here, and you know I'm passionate about getting young people, everybody, registered to vote and participating in our electoral system. I gave you a presentation on a simple way to do that last month. I went by the student ID issuance and found out that it's not being implemented, so I wanted to come back and underscore the importance to me. I've never said this before to you, but I worked in 20 countries of Africa, Asia, South, Central America, the Caribbean. Frequently, I was appalled by the conditions in which the people lived. I had to see people at the point of death. Because of my job, I was taken to where people were dying. And what I concluded after working since 1973 in that work is that their governments were highly unresponsive to them and did not care about them, and they, by and large, were not able to express their wishes and hopes to the government. That is why I think back in 1965, the US Congress passed the Higher Education Act and specified in the Higher Education Act of 1965 that all colleges would offer voter registration forms to all students, either physically or electronically. Johnson County Community College, as you know, complies with the letter of the law in doing that, sending out an electronic message. When I consult with students, students say, well, with that electronic message, what we do is we hit delete. It's something we don't know about that the administration is sending us, so we delete it. I suggested last month that you already have these voter registration forms at the student ID desk. I went to the student ID desk and said, ask, why don't you put out, not just having a folder, why don't you put out those student voter registration forms? And they replied, we only put out information that is relevant to the students. That caused me an extreme double take, as you might imagine. As you know, six of your eight learning outcomes involve civic engagement and political engagement and/or political engagement. If students were registering to vote and actually participating in the elections, then you would automatically be meeting six of your eight student learning outcomes. Furthermore, you would also be increasing the engaged public who support your budget, support your programs. You would be registering your clientele to express their opinion. So, once again, I'm going to humbly request that you put out these forms. They're there already at the student ID, but they're in a folder, and a student has to divine that they're in the folder and to divine that they could ask for them and then take the initiative to ask for them, rather than us asking the simple question, would you like a voter registration form? Oh, thank you anyway, then, if they don't, or would you like a voter registration form? Here it is. Follow all the instructions. If you don't, you might not get registered to vote. So that is my request to you, again, to consider this. This is the hot time when many, many students are coming through and getting their student IDs. That is the only physical point on campus that all students have to come through. Do you have any questions for me?
Trustee Cross?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Rosell, thank you for being here. You and I have talked many times about this, correct?
Yes.
And you agree with me now that the state of Kansas now requires that there be a voter ID when you vote, right? I myself wonder why we even need to register to vote if now we have to have an ID. Why not simply take care of the process at the beginning, right? But let me ask you this, sir. What do you think the mission of the college here is?
I assume it's to achieve the student learning outcomes that the college has declared as the objectives for all students who are enrolled in the college.
I would agree to a certain extent, but we have a mission here to educate the general population and those that come forward. And while many of us find a home within the political structure, some of us think that our own partisan or political agendas need to be set aside and further the overall mission of the school.
I'm gonna, we normally do not make this a back and forth, and I don't think that's appropriate at this time. I know that the administration has worked diligently with you. I think this is something that will be an ongoing discussion, but I also think it's, from my standpoint, it's an item for the administration to decide what are the priorities at the student ID point. And so, we appreciate your passion. I think everybody up here would like to have more people registering to vote. The fact that too many people just hit delete is an indication, unfortunately, of some frustration or some disenchantment with the entire system. So, again, I appreciate your passion in bringing this to our attention on multiple occasions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There are no other speakers. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognition. Although there is nothing on the agenda, I would like to ask our general counsel to come to the podium. Tanya doesn't realize this is coming, but we're pleased on a fairly regular basis to have somebody in the Leadership Overland Park class that's sponsored by the Community College and Overland Park Chamber of Commerce. Tanya was in this year's class and was unable to make the luncheon where they made the presentation, so I took it upon myself to bring with me her personally carved and identified box where she'd keep many keepsakes, probably including thumb drives with Board of Trustees meetings on there.
Absolutely.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Leadership programs by our Chambers of Commerce are very important to this county, and I think the Overland Park one has nine separate sessions. I appreciate the administration allowing someone from the college to participate in that because of the networking and relationships that are built there, the understanding of how all levels of government and civic and charitable engagement in the county work is very important. So, thank you again, Tanya. Thanks for being a good sport on the surprise. The next item is, no surprise, it will be our college lobbyist report, Dick Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. If July was a dull month, we certainly made up for it in August, and we're not through yet, although I don't think there's any more surprises or big news that we're at least aware of coming in August. But I do want to give you a little update on what's been going on in Topeka and across the state as we prepare for the fall to set in. The first month in the state's fiscal year appeared to be down about $14.3 million in expected revenues. Keep in mind that this is after the Consensus Revenue Estimating Group adjusted down those figures twice in fiscal year 2016. And so, in doing so, they plan for not only the current fiscal year, but they look forward to the coming fiscal year, which is the one that we're in now, 2017. That group will meet again in November of this year to take another snapshot or another look at where they think the state's finances are going. But we've seen a fairly unfortunate trend over the past couple of years with the revenues not meeting the expectations, and so that's kind of where we're at one month into fiscal year 2017. Keep in mind that each year in June, the state typically loans itself or borrows money to the tune of anywhere from, this year it was 900-plus million dollars. It's a certificate bond of indebtedness, and it's required that those dollars be paid back before the end of the fiscal year comes on June 30th, 2017. So, not only are we down in the first month of expected revenues, but we have a $900-million bond that we'll need to pay back come the end of this fiscal year. All of that combined is most likely what attributed to a downgrade, again, in the state's credit rating. And I offer that just because I know that we make financial decisions here at the college, and things like that are important to us when we're doing bond work. And so, the state has moved from a AA to a AA-, meaning that 41 other states have a better credit rating than the state of Kansas. The other thing that I want to talk about as it relates to the finances of the state is the governor has recommended, or at least has requested, that state agencies look into what a 5% cut would look like. I think that nothing will likely be done with regards to any cuts unless we have some very horrendous months between now and November, but I think that nothing will likely be done before the November general election and probably not until after the Consensus Revenue Estimating Group meets to kind of just see where things need to be at the state. We saw some movement in the political process on August 2nd. There were approximately five races in Johnson County where a challenger beat an incumbent. There are a couple of other districts that surround Johnson County where there might be some overlap, but those are the ones that I've measured. We're likely to see some additional change in the general election. There are some, I think where we might see most of the change is going to be in the Senate. There are some seats across the state that are very vulnerable and seats that had close races four years ago, and I think that we'll definitely see, we're already in the 10 or 11 range right now for Democrats in the Senate. We could see as many as 12, 13, or 14, depending on how some of those races unfold. So, we know that there's going to be some change, at least on that side of the Capitol. We'll see some change, and we already have seen some change in the House as well. Both of, what we know as a result of the primary is that the leadership races are going to look very interesting, and again, that will change come November as well. The legislature comes to Topeka the first week or so in December, and that's when they elect the leadership amongst their own ranks. There's already some campaigning going on from within those who've identified themselves as running for a leadership post, and depending on what happens in November, we're likely to see some very different folks in leadership come January 2017. And that means that we're going to see some change. There's some races in the general that could change what the face of the education committees look like as well. We already know that the Senate chairman, who did not run this past election cycle, which means we'll have a new education chair in the Senate, not sure with the budget chair, well, the budget chair lost in his primary out in Salina, and so we'll have a new person there on the Senate side. And chances are likely that, there are some concerned folks out there, and the input that we get from folks that are out in the field is there could be some change, not only in the budget chair, but also in the House education chairmanship as well. So, we'll see what happens. We continue to monitor that, and I'll certainly have a more robust report in November when it comes to what the state is going to look like in the legislative process in 2017. Not to be dismissed, and I've mentioned this before, but again, I think this will play a role in what the turnout in November looks like. You are going, I've already begun to see it in the way of ads and some press releases, some postcards. I received another one just yesterday. You're going to see a whole lot of new groups that you've never heard of sending you mail. You're going to see and hear it on TV and on the radio. You'll see it on banner ads and on the internet and in the newspapers with respect to judicial retention. And I've talked about that a little bit in the past. There are four targets for certain in the Supreme Court, and you'll see some additional pieces of mail that you've never heard of those groups. There's going to be a lot of money spent on the retention of those justices or to vote those justices out of office, out of their position, and that very well likely could determine what the outcome of, who shows up to vote. That could affect some other races as well, not to mention the presidential race that's also going to be held in November. So, all of those factors come together to really, we've never seen something like this before in the wake of an election and what the outcomes could look like. Finally, the Kansas Board of Regents gets together with their government relations folks every year for a little mini retreat, and we did that last Friday. And I've bulletized some items that I thought were important for you to be aware of. There appears to be no initiatives coming from the Community College Association other than watching for and advocating for budget items. We'll probably see another bill this year as it relates to a merger between a state university and a technical college. That does potentially have some impact on the community college system. It's unsure if there'll be a service area bill that comes out. There have been talk in the past about such items. Nothing really ever materialized in a significant way, but I think that that's something that we need to be aware of. A new item that I think will be of interest, and you'll be hearing about this, or we'll be working this angle, probably from an administrative side, but certainly everyone is welcome. In the past, colleges have, there have been the Community College Day, there has been the State University Day. Each individual, state university usually comes up and has their own day at the State House. They set up big tables and displays. There's going to be an effort this year to have a Higher Education Day on January 19th, and that will eliminate the other individual silos supposedly that come up. I don't know that they fully grasp how it's going to work, but it's just beginning to take shape, and I believe they've reserved all five floors of the Capitol for this event. And so, we will be a part of that as part of the community college system. Again, I have no details, other than just it's going to be on January 19th, and that's something that will be new that we're looking forward to. And then finally, the board made clear that their number-one initiative for this coming year is to prevent any further cuts to higher education funding and then secondarily to restore the 4% cuts that occurred during the 2016 fiscal year. I think I would stop there and if I'm able, answer any questions.
Trustee Lindstrom?
Mr. Carter, you opened up with the comments about the state revenue and the projections and the readjustments. Can you, for my benefit and possibly for others' too, explain how that happens, how those projections happen, and who sits on the body that actually makes those projections?
The Consensus Revenue Estimating Group is made up of the chief budget officer for Legislative Research, the director of Legislative Research, the governor's budget director. There are some university economists that sit on that Consensus Revenue Estimating Group, and they look at past trends and they look at policies that have been passed in the legislative process to make determinations on what the expected level of revenue should look like as it comes into the state's coffers.
So, are those figures generated from the administration, or is it from a group that includes more than just the administration?
No, it's from a much larger group than just the administration. There is a group that comes together, and it's much like sitting around the room and trying to figure out just exactly where they think things are going to go. I mean, they're projections.
Other questions for Mr. Carter?
I've got one, Greg. Dick, there is some speculation that we need to prepare for another 5% cut. Does that apply to higher ed? Yeah, I think it certainly would. I know that higher education has borne the brunt of some of those cuts in the past. It impacts the different sectors of higher ed differently, and I know that tech colleges and community colleges maybe haven't seen some of the significant cuts like the state universities have, but I do believe that everything's on the table when it comes to that.
Trustee Ingram?
Was that in reference to the 5% that he was speaking about earlier?
Yeah.
Okay, I assumed that. The other question that I would have, you said our bond rating has gone from a AA to a AA-, what's the highest rating?
I believe the highest rating is AAA.
Okay.
I'm not a bond specialist, but I do believe that's typically what the highest rating is.
Can we go lower than a AA-,?
I think you can.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, certainly. Mr. Carter, the governor, as I understand it, has blamed the status of the economy and perhaps tax revenues to the fact that agricultural commodity prices are down or oil and gas commodity prices are down. Short of an amazing recovery in those two industries, would there be any easier way to stabilize the state budget and perhaps improve the rating of the state's credit?
Well, I think that, again, I'm not a bond counsel, so I can't speak to how...
That was a bad question, perhaps.
...how the agencies rate the state and what data they use for that. But I do think that the example that I've used in the past is that historically Kansas operated on, and you've heard the analogy of the three-legged stool, and when you take away one or more of those legs, you have to figure out where to supplement the revenue if you're making that stool unstable. I think that the administration chose to move in a direction of a consumption tax, and we saw that, I believe, two sessions ago, and those revenue expectations, well, with this particular month, they did not meet the expected revenue level. So, I think it's, you know, having that three-legged stool example, I think is probably the best one to continue to use.
Just a quick follow-up, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carter, thank you for that, and I certainly think that this administration's tax policies have been responsible, as you just said. And while everybody in the room knows what you just described, I get two or three people every month that say they saw me on TV, and at the off chance that they watched the whole thing. I just wanted to be able to understand, have them understand what you're talking about, what we're talking about, and why many of us were heartened by the election results earlier this month and that it's critical that we take a different budget direction.
Mr. Carter, you mentioned there may not be any action until the fall meeting of the Consensus Revenue Estimating Group. When is that?
Well, it'll be after the election. It's typically the middle of the month. I think they can set the date whenever they want, but it'll be after the election.
Before leadership is picked in December?
Most likely before leadership is picked in December is correct.
Thank you. Appreciate your continued work for us in and around Topeka. The next item on the agenda is our annual statutorily required budget hearing on, or public hearing on the budget for this college for fiscal year 2017, which began on July 1, 2016, and will end on June 30, 2017. I continue to believe that in addition to selecting the president to run this college, our number-one responsibility is to establish a budget that funds the functions of this college in a reasonable way and that, you know, sets our tax levies, our tuition, our other revenue sources in a way that everybody can plan and make sure that the next school year comes off relatively smoothly. I'm going to go through a little bit about, I did this last year because I think there have been concerns expressed by some that the budgeting processes of local governments aren't transparent enough or aren't accountable enough or somehow hide the ball from the public so that individuals can't understand what we are doing, why we're spending their tax dollars, or how we're spending their tax dollars. I don't think that's true, and I'm going to try today to help make sure that anybody in the audience or anybody watching on TV can understand that, what we do. We started working on this budget last fall, probably in October, with the first suggestion of budget guidelines that would guide staff and administrative staff and the budget officers in the college in coming up with the amount of expenditures and revenues needed for the next fiscal year. That, if you follow our agendas either for Management Committee or for this board, you will find budget guidelines in virtually all of the agendas from that point forward. We've been assisted in that as a board by Dr. Sobchak and Barbara Larson, Rachel Leirs, and everybody else on the team, really budget directors and others, budget administrators who have the responsibility of coming up with their portion of the college. We adopted budget guidelines last fall as a board to tell staff where to go look, what are the parameters for coming up with a budget. Those budget guidelines included trying to increase our ending balance and adding to our reserves because we know we have needs coming up. In fact, we had a retreat last Saturday which indicated the kind of needs we have in our career technical education programs, in our classrooms, in our aging buildings, and other infrastructure. The budget guidelines include maintaining the same level of faculty and staff positions as in fiscal year 2016, using a priority-based budgeting system that looks at our strategic goal and our key performance indicators to help us make decisions on where we want to spend our money so we reach our strategic goals. We assumed increased valuation, assessed valuation, the county would go up by 4% last fall. The county has done better than that because of the growth in this particular county in Kansas. It's 6.5%. We assumed there would be no change in the amount of aid we get from the state of Kansas, which is about 15% of our budget, and as we just heard from Mr. Carter, that is one area that is uncertain, and over the last two years, we have suffered cuts of about $1 million total in state funding because of the revenue issues at the state. We also gave guidelines to our staff that student tuition would increase by $2 a credit hour for in-county students and $6 a credit hour for those out of county and out-of-state students. And finally, we assumed that the property tax mill levy, the rate of taxation that we charge based on property tax values, would not go up. Those guidelines were reviewed several times throughout the year. In April, we had a budget workshop at this meeting. We reviewed a 97-page budget booklet, which is a public document that shows everything from where our revenues are, where our expenses are, goes here in great detail how we spend the taxpayers' money, the students' money, grant money, and other monies that we get at the college. In May, we adopted a management budget to try to give our administration an idea of what can they do when they need to sign contracts that will take effect July 1, knowing that we can't adopt an official budget until this meeting after a public hearing. But in order to give management an idea of what we think we are going to do in our budget, we adopted a management budget in May after discussion among the board. The final legal budget will be adopted later today during the Management Committee process after the public hearing occurs. And I'm going to open the public hearing in a minute to see if we have anybody who wants to speak as a stakeholder of the college. Most of our assets in this college are people, and it's no surprise that 76% of the total budget authority that we're asking for next year, which is $146 million in the general fund, 76% of that goes to people. It goes to salaries and benefits for the people who teach, from all the way from the people that teach to the administration to the people that clean up the buildings at night. 61% of our revenues in the general fund come from property taxpayers in Johnson County. That's homeowners, it's apartment owners, it's business owners, it's warehouse... That's homeowners, it's apartment owners, it's business owners, it's warehouse owners. They are generous in their support of this college. A homeowner with a home value of $262,000, which is the average home value in Johnson County as of January 1, 2016, will pay $285 to support this college. $285 on their value of $262,000. Johnson County residents next year will be asked to pay $2 more, or $92 a credit hour, $93 a credit hour. Non-Johnson County Kansans will pay $110 a credit hour. Out-of-state students will pay $220 a credit hour, and this will be the first year we have adopted a metro rate, so that ZIP codes adjacent in the Kansas City metro area, students from those ZIP codes will pay $135 a credit hour. Rather than out-of-state tuition, they'll pay a lower rate with the hope that we can draw those people to Johnson County, train them here, and keep them here to be part of our labor force. The budget includes a 2.75% average salary increase for faculty. That was part of the negotiations in our collective bargaining agreement, and is part of our obligation as a board under the master agreement. It also includes an average 2% across-the-board salary increase for staff. As part of the budget process, we have reallocated some positions without adding positions. For instance, next year, we will have six new student success engagement persons. We will also pick up the cost of a police officer who was previously funded by a grant. We're not going to let that position go in times when security needs are significant, and we're also going to hire another police officer out of our general fund budget. Obviously, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this, we would welcome their input. We have to budget, balance the budget by law. We don't play smoke and mirrors. Everything is in the budget, everything is in the budget workshop book. If we don't like what we're spending here, if we're spending too much here and we cut what we spend there, then we have a consequence. If we want to spend something somewhere else, we have a consequence. If we don't get revenues from one source, we've either got to make them up from another source, or we have consequences. I think that's all well-understood by this board, and we listen all year to people on campus and off-campus who talk to us about whether we're being efficient, whether we're using tax dollars well. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the audience, any stakeholder of any kind, that would like to make any comments on the budget that was published last month for the community college. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make comments? If not, I will close the public hearing. This is not unusual. I think it's a tribute, number one, to the quality and credibility of the college over the years in spending money wisely. I think it's partly attributable to the fact that we are accountable and transparent in how we budget, and also that people talk to us throughout the year and assume we're listening to them, and I think we are. We will have, we may have more discussion at the management committee when there's a motion to adopt the official budget, but at this point, we will declare the public hearing closed and move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is, committee reports, starting with the audit committee. The audit committee met on August 4 at 8:00 a.m. I was present as the chair, along with Vice Chair Stephanie Sharp. We had a number of reports. We had the audit, our internal auditors did their annual, or bi-annual travel expense review, where they look at the travel and expense numbers spent by the Board of Trustees to make sure they meet policy guidelines, and by the administration to make sure they do, they meet policy guidelines. And also, if I remember right, do a random sampling of other expenditures when people travel out of town and claim either mileage, or airfare, or hotel expense, or registration expenses. Those were all audited and found to be appropriate, necessary, and in substantial compliance with our policies and procedures, which we always appreciate. We had a quarterly projects updates about different audits that are in various stages of completion and movement toward adopting or implementing recommendations made on previous budget audits. We had a report on the Ethics Report Line, which is our anonymous report line where anybody can report anything that they believe should be reviewed on behalf of the college. They can do it anonymously, or they can give their name. We had a presentation on the Behavioral Intervention Team and the reports from that team, where somebody sees something that looks like it's out of order with a student or the faculty member or a staff member, and reports that, and it is followed up on by a Behavioral Intervention Team. We looked at the working agenda for next year, which is what informs each of our committees on what they're going to do at various times during the year. The only action item is a recommendation from the Audit Committee that the board approved the 2016-2017 Audit Committee Working Agenda, as shown on Page 4 of the Board Agenda, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no. Motion carried. The Audit Committee Working Agenda is approved. Trustee Sharp and I would stand for questions if anybody has any. If not, we'll move on to the Human Resources Committee. Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. The minutes of the Human Resources Committee are found on Pages 5 through 7 of the Board Packet, and includes one recommendation. The committee met on Monday, August 1. The first item for discussion was the proposed changes for 403B and 457B plans. Mr. Zimmerman provided an overview of the three following proposed changes to the current administration of the Johnson County Community College 403B and 457B plans. The first was to consolidate from four record keepers to one record keeper, to streamline the investment review, and thirdly, to hire an independent investment advisor. Human Resources is continuing to explore options and communicate with employees regarding these proposed changes. A tentative timeline was shared and includes the issuance of an RFP for investment consultant in the third quarter of 2016, to hire an investment consultant to work with the college's investment committee to design a new investment lineup in the fourth quarter of 2016, to issue an RFP for a sole record keeper in the first quarter of 2017, followed by informing planned participants of changes in the second quarter, and the implementation of a new administration model July 1 of 2017. Staffing tables and salary overview were also on the agenda. Ms. Centliver provided an overview of the current college's salary staffing tables, which include the following highlights: policy 418.04, compensation, the philosophy of compensation, pay grades and ranges, the comp ratio guidelines, initial salary placement, and monthly recommendations to the board, and finally, the annual publications of staffing authorization tables. Item number three was our working agenda for the fiscal year 1617, which is found on Page 7 of the Board Packet, and Dr. Korb reviewed the proposed Human Resources Committee Working Agenda for 2016-2017. And with that, I do have a recommendation, and I will make the following motion, that it is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee for the Board of Trustees to approve the Human Resource Committee Working Agenda for 2016-2017, as shown subsequently in the Board Packet.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second to adopt the working agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? Trustee Cross.
Without any opposition, I'm just asking, Trustee Ingram, why does the college need to hire an independent investment advisor?
We're just, we're recommending that we, well, we're not really to the recommending stage, we're still exploring this, but right now, the college has four different investment groups that we work with. Primarily, the majority of our funds are with Tia Kref and Lincoln Financial. What we're proposing is that we actually move to, that we go out for RFP, and we move to one record keeper. So we have one record keeper that we would use, and then with an investment advisor, we would be able to go through and analyze the best funds for our employees to invest in. Right now, if you have your money with Tia Kref, the selection, the options that you have are Kref funds. If you are with Lincoln, you get Lincoln options, where if we go with an independent investment advisor, we would be able to select the best funds that we can. And one of the main reasons for doing this, and this has been in the news quite a bit, but one of the main reasons for doing it is because you have better control over selecting options where you can select ones that have reduced fees. So the administrative fees on some of them in the programs that we have, we have no control over what they are because they're with Tia Kref or they're with Lincoln. But we would be able to do a better job of selecting funds that wouldn't cost our employees as much, that are performing well. But rather than relying on our own resources for doing that, we think it would probably be a good idea to have an independent advisor that would help us to analyze those funds, to put together the portfolio for our employees.
I thank you for that.
Any additional questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting the working agenda for Human Resources, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, you both know. Motion carries unanimously. Learning Quality, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met in this room on August 1 of this month at 8:30 a.m. Trustee Henry Sandate was present for his meeting. He was elected to the JCCC Board, selected by the Board in April of 2016, and he'll serve on the committee for the remainder of the calendar year. Mr. McLeod, the Vice President of Academic Affairs and CAO, welcomed Trustee Sandate to his first Learning Quality meeting, so we're proud to have him on board with us this year. Mr. McLeod gave a presentation about a review and update of policies that were needed for the upcoming year. For future meetings, the committee will broaden its scope to include more presentations for learning, engagement, student services, and continuing education. A proposal was presented to the Learning Quality Committee to approve the working agenda for the 2016-17 fiscal year, and it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016-2017 Learning Quality Committee Working Agenda, as is subsequently shown in the Board Packet, and I would so move.
Second.
Been moved in second to adopt the working agenda for Learning Quality Committee. Any discussion or any questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Propose no. Motion carries unanimously.
Vice President McLeod also presented five affiliation agreements which have been reviewed by legal counsel and provide clinical placement for students who need practical experience to complete their curriculum. The committee approved three separate affiliation agreements for credit programs in healthcare, interpreting, legal interpreting, a combined agreement for health occupations, and practical nursing. Two additional agreements were approved for continuing education programs for the pharmacy, technician, and phlebotomy programs. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent addition, consent agenda portion of this Board Packet. Other agreements were presented for informational purposes. Number one, 15 concurrent enrollment partnership agreements, renewals for the College Now program. Number two, four facility use agreement renewals for the College Close-to-Home program. And three, five shared funding agreement renewals for the College Now program. Learning Quality Committee reviewed the aforementioned agreements, which will be discussed by the Management Committee at their August meeting. Dave Ellis, a counselor, was granted a sabbatical for the 2015 semester to explore the beginning, to explore beginning a program, working with seven to 10 high-risk students at three-area high schools to provide individual counseling, which would in large encourage the students to attend college, preferably here at Johnson County Community College. Results of the sabbatical include approximately 35 students enrolling for fall classes at the college, with others deciding to attend four other colleges, attend other colleges. Future plans include collaborating with the college admissions office and the high school counselor's office to assist high school students at each school with filling out the college application, attending orientation, and arranging for an assessment testing. Jeff Anderson, who's also a counselor, was granted a sabbatical for the fall 2015 semester to research, identify, and contact key personnel in the United States-based corporations based, in the US-based corporations based in Los Pintas, Mexico, with the intent of soliciting and securing funding required to underwrite annual operating expenses for the Centro Integral Communitario Clinic, CIC, located in Los Pintas. Securing funds for the long-term sustainability is critical for providing continued learning opportunities for JCCC students through the college's services learning partnership with CIC. Results of the sabbatical include reaching out to IBM Corporation in Mexico City, resulting in an employee service volunteer program being launched with the employees working directly with the CIC. Another connection was made through the college with BNSF employer, employees, involving, generating interest for them traveling to Los Pintas, participating in service work in the community, and/or possibly with BNSF providing a donation to the project. Future plans include continuing to pursue funding for the project. We did have a discussion that was tabled with respect to monitoring student development and a discussion on student loan debt and counseling services offered to our students. I appreciate Mr. McLeod for bringing that up. I do look forward to talking more with Trustee Sandate and Dr. Weber and others about that issue. Randy Weber, Vice President of Student Success and CSAO, gave an overview of the Fall Enrollment Report. The report is ran daily and shows enrollment trends for this fall compared to data received for the same time last year. The report can be accessed through InfoShare by searching IR or by clicking on the following link available in your Board Packet. Mr. Chair, the Learning Quality Working Agenda follows on the subsequent pages of the Board Packet, and as much as I don't want to, I'll stop talking now because that concludes my report.
Questions for Trustee Cross? If not, thank you for that, and we'll move on to the lengthy Management Committee report. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Musial. The Management Committee meeting did, Committee did meet on August 3 in this room. All members were present, including Trustees Cross and Lindstrom, and we don't have the annual calendar report for you like all the other committees have had, because we're a 12-month active committee, and we actually approved that in July at the beginning of the year, rather than two months into the year.
We will double your salaries for that.
So, we won't, we won't deal with that. My apologies to the other committees for being so rude. Dr. McLeod did update us on several affiliation articulation reverse transfer cooperative agreements, which was referenced by Trustee Cross in the Learning Quality Committee. Those recommendations you'll find in the Consent Agenda, and by the way, the total work of the Committee is found on Pages 12 through 45 of your Packet for your reading pleasure. Dr. Antel gave an update on the JCC Center for Sustainability and a roundtable conference on energy that was held on that day, August 3, and in kind of partnership with the Kansas City Power and Light, and dealing with efficiency programs under consideration by the Kansas Corporation Commission. We have a number of recommendations for you to vote upon tonight. The first is given by Kate Allen, and it has to do with naming of our facilities and un-naming of our facilities. I'll draw your attention to the, and what we're doing is, we've been bringing to this Board a number of recommendations that make our policies more efficient, and that's true tonight as well. And what we're looking at are naming college facilities policy 217.05, and turning that into a policy that streamlines how we name and how we change the names of buildings. I think the Management Committee, and I hope this Board and the entire staff take very seriously the process of how we name buildings in the first place, and basically, those considerations are made for not just financial contributions to the college, there's a series of details that outline what requirement is there, but also contributions to the college that someone may have made over a period of time. And throughout this discussion, the policy will state that it requires affirmative vote by five trustees to either name a building or change the name of a building. And even in changing the name of the building, considerations are made, has the building outgrown its usefulness, is that program still in place, but there's a whole series. And what we're going to vote on tonight is not that, is not a lot of detail there for you consider. But we did have a lot of discussion, should that vote have been six trustees to name or change the name of a building? Should it be 7-0? And I think after a very serious discussion, we agreed that a 5-2 vote was enough to name a building and to change the name of a building. So with all of that, we do have a recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the revisions to the naming college facilities policy 217.05, and the deletion of the naming college facilities appendix policy, as shown subsequently in the Board Packet, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to revise the name... Been moved and seconded to revise the Naming College Facilities Policy. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no, motion carries unanimously.
In the public hearing for the budget, Trustee Musil did an outstanding job of referring to our three major budgeting processes. One is the management budget, one is the official operating budget, and the third then has to deal with how we make budget allocations at the end of the year. And one of those budgets was generated in 19, or one of those policies was generated in 1985, another one in 1995. We did change and amend one of those policies in 2005. So, we've been dealing with policies here that are over 30 years old and as recently as 2005. And after, again, lengthy discussion about the purpose of doing that and working with the efficiency of the college, we're combining all of those policies into a cleaner policy that deals with the efficiency of our college at this point. And I suspect that some of you may have questions about, well, does this, as we delete a lot of language that you see in the Board Packet and make it more efficient, what does that do to our checks and balances? And I think one of the reasons is we're cleaning up these policies is that we have placed a number of steps in place in checks and balances. You heard Trustee Musil refer earlier about the reports that come to the Management Committee, the reports that come to the Board. We have an internal auditing process. You heard a part of that in his audit report. We have an external audit process. We have a budgeting team in our business department that's very, very thorough about each of their respective areas. One of the changes we're making is back in 1995, we had a policy that at the end of May, May 31st, if there were dollars in a budget line item that were going to be transferred to another budget line item that exceeded $10,000, that required prior trustee approval to make that happen. And then at the, in June, if there were dollars left over again, that would require approval to make that occur. And there were situations where some things may have happened. A piece of equipment broke down, air conditioning didn't work, that it would be difficult to wait for the Board to meet again in a next monthly meeting to make those decisions. And with all of the checks and balances we have in place, we as the Management Committee really feel that the consolidation of these three policies, as we're recommending, is most appropriate. And therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the deletion of the legal budgeting policy, the deletion of the use-of-year-funds policy, and the adoption of an updated and consolidated budget policy as shown subsequently in the Board Packet. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to do the updated consolidated budgeting policy. Are there any questions for Trustee Cook? He already anticipated our questions and gave us the answer, so come up with something really good. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no.
Thank you very much. The next item is the recommendation dealing with our State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. This is basically to take, make consideration for new staff that are working in these pools. We've had reports on the pool previously and also just who has the authority to sign and process this. So, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve and adopt the resolution regarding the State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the administration's recommendation regarding the State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Are there any questions or any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed no, motion carries.
Next item is the budget for fiscal year 2016-17. Earlier in this meeting, Trustee Musil again did a very wonderful job in laying out the steps that take place month by month for the year. We had the public hearing, and we are now at the point where we adopt the official operating budget. I think what I'll do is, because we've discussed this so many times, is I'll make that motion, and if there's any discussion, we can deal with it. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the fiscal year 2016-17 budget as published, which includes total property tax levied of $87,448,419 for 2017, compared to $81,401,144 in 2016, and does hereby certify said budget to the County Clerk of Johnson County, Kansas, for collection in the manner prescribed by law, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the 2016-2017 budget as published and presented. Dr. Cook, do you have other comments? And we have plenty of time for questions and discussion.
Well, I would just like to amplify one more time that the amount of energy and time that goes in, not just by the administrative staff. We start this whole budgeting process by departments, work our way up. And so, there's a lot of input into anticipating what our learning program is going to be in a future year and what kind of revenue is required to carry out that learning plan. And you can't share enough the amount of energy that goes in by all the people to get to the point of our budgets. We've been blessed with fiduciary accountability by all of our staff and our departments and our internal checks and balances to ensure that this college is in very good financial shape. And while we may have differences of opinion as to where all the sources of revenue may come, I know that we have talked about tuition. Do we want our tuition to be a little less than it is? I think we always want to make it affordable to students. I think we all agree that there needs to be some student involvement with that. There's always a debate about how much the state should contribute, and there's always the discussion about what our property taxes should be. But I really value and appreciate all the input that's gone into the work for a 12-month period. In fact, even, and more than that, because you'll recall, Trustee Musil, that we do have a five-year plan, and we continually look ahead for five years as to what may occur, with the detail coming for the next succeeding fiscal year. Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Management Chair, Trustee Cook. I appreciate your comments, and I concur with you that any number of people within the administration, within the college, and on this Board have done their level best to put together the money that we need to finance this college. As you know, many of the concerns that you just shared were in anticipation of my comments and my no vote, and is not to impeach the process, the integrity or fiscal fiduciary responsibility of anyone here. It's just a respectful disagreement on policy that tuition and fees have gone up considerably in recent years. And it really is a protest vote to say, we must account for how much tuition and fees has gone up on our students. You know, this Board, my first vote on this Board at the recommendation of the administration, raised the mill. We attempted to do one mill, but .75 mill in 2013-14, which I think was a strategic and wise move to help weather the storm that the state has incurred. And I think with the looming storm, as bad as it's been with the state, it's only going to get worse. Any objective reading of the Legislative Research Department's material shows that in the next three to five years, this very bad situation gets very, very worse. So, I think it would behoove us to do everything that we can to make sure we get more money from the state and we'll look at alternatives to perhaps, and reluctantly, raising the mill to get the money that we need to pay down some of our debt, anticipated projects we're going to have here at the college. And I do appreciate your work, Trustee Cook, because I know that you take tremendous pride, given your experience and commitment to this Board. And I appreciate everything you do. I just wanted to state my opinion.
Thank you.
Other comments on the budget? Well, I have a couple. I want to address again comments that we hear frequently on two points. One is property tax levels, and the second one is tuition. Our property tax levy is not going up, but we are getting 6.5% more money because of the growth of this county. Both new properties that have come online, whether it's warehouses out at the intermodal that we saw last week on our tour, new stores, new shops, new homes, we share in that. I have never shied away from the fact that I think we are entitled to share in that growth because I think we cause part of it. We contribute to it, not by ourselves, but we help generate the workforce. We help teach people how to start small businesses. And so, we're entitled to keep that so long as we can use it well. And during those three or four years when the county's appraised value declined for the first time in the history of the county, we suffered along with everybody else by taking less and didn't raise the mill levy during that period of time because of the prudence of that Board having built up reserves so that we could weather the second, you know, the longest, the Great Recession, the longest recession in American history, not as hard as the Great Depression, but certainly a significant one. So, this year, I, as I said last year, accepting the increased property valuation and the increased revenues that go with that are something I think we can do with a very clean conscience. I will say that if next year we have another 6% increase, which I believe is what it was last year, and the valuation continues to increase, and we continue to be unable to find new ways to get, reach more students, whether on campus or online or otherwise, because we budgeted a 3% decrease in credit enrollment. At some point, those lines cross, and I won't be comfortable accepting every dollar of increased value and will be supporting or looking at the opportunity to decrease our mill levy because I think there is an obligation that comes with taking that money, which is to serve more students in new ways and in better ways. And I appreciate Trustee Cross's comments on tuition, which have been consistent. I don't believe in protest votes, Lee, but I know that you feel strongly about this. I would note that without the tuition increases that we imposed on in-county students, in-Kansas students, and out-of-state students, we would be missing $917,000 in revenues. So, if we're not going to do that, then I think it's incumbent upon us to come up with another $1 million someplace, or 917,000. And I also would note that because we created the metro rate, which meant people in Jackson County and Cass County and Clay County, maybe Platte County, I'm not sure, all the zip codes are going to be able to come here instead of at $220 an hour at $135 an hour because we're trying something to attract those students that we need. The net effect of our tuition increase in the other areas is revenue neutral. So, if we're going to have a metro rate, which I think everybody on this Board supported, and we don't increase the amount, or we don't create a metro rate, we've got two burdens to make up. So, again, I look back at where we are in our tuition rates. At $93 for a Johnson County resident, KU is 380, K-State's 319. That's before their recent increases. Metropolitan Community College on the Kansas City side is $95 a credit hour. Kansas City, Kansas, is $108 a credit hour. In our budget workshop, we had a 50-state chart of where we rank, where Kansas ranks in its cost for two-year colleges. And if I've done my math right, we're about 44th lowest. So, that doesn't mean we don't watch tuition, and it doesn't mean we don't worry about student loan rates. It doesn't mean we don't continue to raise money for scholarships so we can give more than $1 million away through our foundation. But all in all, I'm comfortable that that is something that is a necessary part of our budget process, that we ask students to contribute a little bit more. We're asking taxpayers to contribute a significant amount more, and we're trying to find ways to be more efficient here. All of those things work together to reach a balanced budget. Any other comments? Not all in favor of adopting the budget as published, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Six to one with Trustee Cross voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item was a report by Ms. Learz. Our Policy 211.01 requires that the President shall semi-anally submit to the Board of Trustees a report on budget allocations. We talked about that a little earlier in the refinement of policies that we made. And so, she reported that the transfers occurred between January 1 and June 30. There was no, on a budget, by the way, that it was approved by the Board back in May of 2000, a management budget that was approved in May of 2015, with no negative or positive impact upon the total budget. We did have a transfer of funds request, which we have a motion for. Our Office of Sustainability is wanting to move $5,000 from its Initiatives Fund to the JCC Foundation for Scholarships. And I apologize, I didn't write down that number. It seems to me from memory, this is about now $90,000 or so that the Office of Sustainability has transferred to the Scholarship Fund. And we really appreciate their work. A lot of good work by college students in our sustainability program and staff to realize. Dr. Antel gave a more detailed report about that as well in terms of the contribution that our sustainability program makes to the college. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of $5,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the JCC Foundation for Student Scholarships. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to transfer $5,000 from the Sustainability Fund to the Foundation for Scholarships. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
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 No, motion carries unanimously.
We then have a recommendation. We dealt with some requests for proposals in terms of charter bus service for our athletic program. I think you have all of those in your packet. This is an example of where we're not taking the low bid, as you can see. But the reason for that is the length of service and the service we've been getting from Crossroad Tours at this point. So, it is recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract with Crossroad Tours for regular season athletic team charter bus service in the amount of $84,306. Postseason athletic team charter bus service on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $66,900 and an additional $15,120.60 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $166,327 for athletic team charter bus services, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation for athletic team charter bus service on an as-needed basis. I would note, we did take the low bid the first time, and that company was unable to fulfill its contract and terminated in 2014, which is why we went to now to Crossroad Tours. Any discussion?
Trustee Musil, I'm sorry.
Just a question, I want to tee it up for the Management Chair. How many national championships did that include?
Well, what I was going to say, several. What I was going to say, a question you might have is, how do you know what the postseason expenditure is going to be? That's an item we did talk about at the Management Committee, of $66,000. And that's a great question, it's a fair question. Some of it is based on the history of the sport. Some of it's based on the projection of the teams coming back and how we fare. I just saw news released today of one of our young ladies going to a four-year school, and the coach of that school said that this young lady plays for one of the finest teams in the nation with one of the finest women's coaches in the nation. And so, this whole projection is based on our past history. And I think our lady's soccer team is playing a very tough schedule during the season. And I don't want to start talking about individual programs because it's unfair to the rest. We just have a very successful athletic program in the sports in which we participate. And I guess if we believe in playing the games, then we should expect to win and participate at the end of the season. So, it's an expenditure that, by the way, I don't know how one can measure the publicity to the college when you're on the national agenda in national tournaments. And I've said this before, but when I represent us at ACCT, a lot of the colleges across the country have heard of us because of the athletic success we've had. And I think we've talked about the reputation of our culinary program, but our athletic program provides a priceless image to the community college movement in the country. That's not what you asked, but I'd just say several to answer your question.
We saved money two years ago when we just hosted the women's championship and won it, right? So, no travel costs. All right, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a Next item is a recommendation and a motion for the renewal of annual contract for network infrastructure equipment. Again, you have that detail. 14 firms were notified, four responded. Again, we are not recommending the low bidder, but that is due to the services we've received in meeting the RFP. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for network infrastructure equipment and services with CDW Government LLC in the amount not to exceed $1,040,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second? Moves in second to accept a contract with CDW Government LLC. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Next, we have a motion for print material. 50 firms were notified for the bid. We received eight responses with our RFP. Again, a very thorough examination by several people into this particular process, and I will make, at the conclusion of that, I'll make, of their work, I make this recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract with Unisource Document Products for multifunction devices and managed printed services in the amount not to exceed $135,000, and I make that motion.
Second? Moves in second to accept the annual contract with Unisource Document Products. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Mitch Borchers gave the sole service, sole source report. Rex Hayes gave us an update on all the management work. In your packet, by the way, you'll note that that is work as of July 31. You may have some concerns about will all of that be completed in a timely fashion. I remember when I first got on the board, and I was walking across the campus, and I was wondering, why are we still doing tuck and pointing here with a week before school? Isn't all the work done when school starts? And I was reminded very nicely that with all of our buildings we have, that that work goes on throughout the year. But don't be alarmed at the percent of completion here on some of these projects because we're into another month. And if you've had a chance to go through Yardley, if you've had a chance to go through by the Collaboration Center, both projects are ones that we were really expecting to have ready for the beginning of school, and it appears that we're going to be in great shape with that. But the fact of the matter is, the maintenance and work on our buildings goes on year-round. And I want to compliment not just Rex and his team and all the people that get that work done, but the inconvenience it causes to faculty and staff when we have a construction project. And that goes a lot smoother when we have cooperation with everybody and realizing that, I don't know, Dr. Sobchak, between our regular enrollment and our adult ed programs and people that come to the, to this campus for entertainment and activities, we probably have 60,000 to 100,000 people coming across this campus in a year, and with all that construction, it's, I really want to applaud you, Rex, and the great work your team does. So I think that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for Trustee Cook or members of the Management Committee? I thank you three again, Trustee Lindstrom, Trustee Cross, and Trustee Cook, but you do a lot of heavy lifting on the Management Committee. We appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is the Treasurers' Report. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The board packet contains the preliminary unaudited Treasurers' Report for the fiscal year ended in June 30, 2016. This preliminary report does not include all of the college's fiscal year-end adjustments. Some of the items of note include, on page one of the Treasurers' Report, is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. Fiscal 2016 revenues were approximately $6 million higher than fiscal year 2015, primarily due to the increase in the ad valorem property tax revenues that both Mr. Chair you and Trustee Cook referenced, resulting from the increases in assessed valuation. The general PTE funds expenses for fiscal year 2016 were approximately $128 million. The fiscal 2016 budget expenses were $142 million, resulting in a 90% expenditure rate for the fiscal year. The college experienced lower-than-budgeted spending in all areas, including salary and benefits, operating and capital. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of June 30, 2016 in all funds was $97.7 million, which is approximately $12.3 million higher than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits, and I thank Ms. Rachel Leers and her staff. Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the Management, excuse me, it's the recommendation of the college administration, that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month of June 30, subject to audit.
Second?
Moves in second to adopt the Treasurers' Report. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Chair, if I may?
Sorry?
I just wanted to thank Trustee Lindstrom, who's been helpful in understanding what it is my job is and his thoughts on the position, and commend him for his help.
Flattery will get you everywhere.
Well, you said it the head.
Anybody, are there any no votes? If not, this passes. Not, Trustee Lindstrom was the treasurer for the last two years, and turn it over to Trustee Cross, and that, I'm sure his leadership has been helpful.
Thank you.
All right. We're ready for the president's monthly report to the board.
Thank you, Trustee Chair Musial. Before you, you have the monthly report to the board for August. I hope you take the time to review it. I'll cover a couple of those highlights later on. As usual, it's an outstanding representation of what happens here on our campus. Really appreciate and I'd like to thank the trustees for approving, for moving the budget along one more step, and we really appreciate the in-depth discussion on mill levies and tuition rates and all those very critical things. But we're going to talk a little bit about what we do here, and that's about student success and educating our students and members of this community. So kick this off and kind of maybe add a little levity and upside to the meeting. We're going to do a lightning round. And so Tom Pagano, you're going to go first, and you're our VP of Information Services, of course, and CIO. Tom, take the stage.
I've got two minutes, right?
And I mentioned the word levity, so we're looking for jokes and all kinds of upbeat things.
All right. Well, thanks for letting me into the lightning round. It's very exciting to be here.
There you go. That's good. That's what we want.
My job tonight is in two minutes to give you an update on what we're doing in information services, so that's what I'm going to do. We're designing a strategy this year that's going to embed the technology planning and what it's going to look like in this fiscal year, a little bit more into the three-year strategic plan than it was last year. So we're going to be coming up with some documents that will show you illustrations of how we align our technology into the strategic plan in ways that you've not seen that done before. So that'll be done by the end of the year, and more to come on that. We are also in the middle of moving, or have just recently moved, the access control group from the Campus Services Group over to our group. They were housed in the Police Department, and now they have become part of our IS department, and we welcome those three employees. They have been a great addition, and they are now becoming part of our group, and we enjoy having them part of us. We have started the security camera project. You'll be seeing the digital cameras throughout the campus moving on. Along with that, you've seen the fiber plant completion, which you've seen that fantastic, colorful, complimentary picture that we put up a few months ago showing the loop around the campus. There were a lot of accolades about the colors that we used on that slide, so thank you. We also conducted a security assessment that we just finished about a week ago, and that is to look at all of the information services, security, internal controls, physical controls, and other sundry items. That will be done in about, we'll get the report back in about a month. We have also, that's two minutes.
Well, you seem to have some momentum, so just keep on, no need to stop.
Okay. So we also just implemented, we're very excited about, a system called Timetrack, which is a system that allows people in the various departments to select when they want to have their replacement, their replacement PCs installed, as opposed to having phone calls, emails, schedules, and all that other stuff. It's working very well, from what I understand. We also are putting up our self-service knowledge base and catalog, which will help reduce phone calls to the help desk, reduce password resets, things along those lines as well. And in closing, just to also add on to the collaboration space, we're going to be getting our great audiovisual team, audiovisual folks into there to finish that out, as Rex finishes his punch list in there. And lastly, we would, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about us looking at our financials, and we are doing a lot of work on trending analysis and looking how to correlate that back to the value we provide through the projects, and then the ongoing keeping the lights on work, as we call operations, back to the goals and initiatives of the college.
That's great, Tom. Tom, how long have you been with us now?
Coming up on here.
Terrific. You do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next. Next, John Clayton. John is our Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness Planning and Research. John?
I'm going to talk about everybody's most favorite topic, and that is accreditation. Come on. Everybody should enjoy accreditation, right? A little bit about the importance of accreditation to the college. If we don't maintain our accreditation here at Johnson County, there are several things that affect us. The biggest one is that we're no longer eligible for Title IV funding. So this budget that you just approved today would drastically be hurt because students would no longer be eligible to get such things as Pell Grants or student loans. So I wanted to keep that in mind about the importance of what it is. That's the big one that really affects us, but it also has to do with transfer and articulation and curriculum and continuous quality improvement of the college and making sure that we meet necessary processes. We're accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, which is one of six accrediting agencies across the nation. We are not accredited by the Department of Ed. The Department of Ed does not accredit individual institutions. They actually accredit accrediting agencies, and then they turn around and accredit us. So through the Higher Learning Commission, there are three different pathways that you can choose. There's the Open, the Standard, and Aquip. We have chosen Aquip, and I'm not sure why that was chosen before my time here at the college, but really, Aquip is the one that is really focused on continuous quality improvement. So part of Aquip is looking at having different action projects that we have to have. Every, or at any given point in time, we are required to have three action projects going. And so they can be no shorter than three months and no longer than a year. And over the past three years or so, we've done such things as the Academic Program Review, looking at our General Education Assessment Plan, the Faculty Portfolio Project, Strategic Planning was an Aquip project, and then the Academic Master Plan was an Aquip project. Right now, our current ones, we have a winter in project. I think that's been talked about in here before, where we're looking at how to offer classes in between the fall, end of the fall semester and the beginning of the spring semester. One that just recently got approved by Cabinet was Faculty Development. So we're going to be looking at identifying best practices for faculty development from around the nation and identifying what our faculty feel like they need for faculty development. The other components for accreditation deal with our systems portfolio, and we're required to do a systems portfolio every four years. It addresses six different criteria or categories that we have to look at, our processes and how we continuously improve those processes, and how we meet HLC's accreditation criteria. This year, we'll be, actually, after every one of those, we get feedback electronically from different appraisers from around the nation. And then every eight years, we actually have a quality checkup, which is where they actually come and visit our campus. We're in the process of doing our systems portfolio. It is due June 1. I'm getting that date memorized and tattooed on my forehead, I believe, because that is a very important date for us. So we're about nine months out for having to have our systems portfolio completed. And what we do with that is we actually do a team-based approach where we have different people from around the campus help identify what our processes are, how we improve our processes, how we track metrics to improve those processes, consolidate that all down into a 125-page document. So everything that the college does is in that document, quote-quote, and then that gets sent off, and then we get feedback based on that. So that is due June 1. We will get our feedback from HLC evaluators in the fall of 2017, and then we will actually have a site visit. We just found this date out just a little while ago, April 30 through May 2. And so as we go forward with this, and that's April 30 through May 2 of 2018, so we're down the road a little ways on that. So as we go forward on this, you know, we're going to be reaching out to the campus community, making sure that they're involved with this process, and hope to keep the board informed of that as well. Any questions?
Trustee Cross?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You said that we get feedback?
Yes.
Are they just mainly, is there any shibboleth they're looking for, or just it sounds like we know what we're doing and?
There are actually different levels of criteria. So it starts out as that we are, the process is not well-defined. Basically, we react to things that happen to us. And then it goes into, we have a systematic process. We have an aligned process, or it's an integrated process, which means that it's fully deployed across all departments, across campus, and we consistently evaluate those processes and strive to improve them.
This is good. This helps us compete with, say, private for-profits that may not be so interested in student development.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's something we should cherish and value as an institution anyway, because we want to continually provide the best education. So even if we didn't need to be accredited, this is actually a great process for us to go through to evaluate where we're at.
Is this a slam dunk?
No, absolutely not. It's a very, very competitive, very rigorous process that we have to go through to, for this evaluation. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears will go into it.
Did you bleed?
Huh?
Did you bleed?
Not yet, I haven't, but you know, I've just-
I just want to make sure you're okay.
Yeah, not yet, but-
He hasn't been here long enough to bleed. So how long have you been here, John?
I've been here just over six months.
That's terrific. Well, thank you. Great report. All right. Dr. Weber. Dr. Weber is our VP of Student Success and Engagement. Randy?
Thanks. I'm going to take the opportunity to update you on two decisions you made last year, and I think the importance of these decisions can be highlighted by reference earlier as part of the budget process today. First one being our metro rate. So we set a goal this coming year to increase our metro rate enrollment by 5%, which meant we would have went from about 620 to 652 stu-, excuse me, 620 to 652 students. We've exceeded that goal by 109 students. So instead of a 5% increase, we're up 16.7% in metro rate enrollment for this coming fall. And in credit hours, we wanted a 5% increase, and we're up 21.9% in credit hours as well, which is 1,230. So on behalf of our team and enrollment management and our folks who, everybody's contributed to it, thank you for that belief and trust in us and making that decision. Secondly, so those were the, that was the number side. The second thing I'm going to update you on a little bit is your decision to reallocate six of our part-time positions to full-time positions so that we could develop full-time student success advocates. Their focus this semester has been to help our first-time full-time students all integrate to the college more effectively. As of 1 o'clock this morning today, we have 1,424 students who are first-time full-time to the college, and so they all have sent out these emails welcoming the students and connecting with them, saying, "I'm here to help you succeed in college. What can I help you with?" I have 13 pages of notes from responses they received from their folks. I will not, in respect for time, read all of them, but I do have three comments and in one reply, the way our folks read to them, to help you understand a little bit better about how they engage with these students. One being a student who said, "Thanks for your email. There are some things I'm still not sure about. Your email came at just the right time. First, it was my understanding that to use the JCAE-GED scholarship, I have to be enrolled in 12 hours. However, I just saw on the scholarship screen that it is only six more hours," which is correct. "Second, how do I find out what books and supplies I need to buy? Thank you. It's really nice to have contact to ask questions about." Another one was, "Hello, Patricia. I must say that it's very reassuring to have a success advocate appointed to me. Somehow, I am more confident. Thank you. I have a question about purchasing the books needed for the classes I am enrolling in this semester. Are there any ways of obtaining them for those who don't have $400 to just drop? I'm looking to get them purchased as soon as I possibly can, but money sadly is an object. Thanks so much for your help." "Hi, Patricia. I was curious if I needed any vaccinations or TB tests before school started. I know K-State did, but I wasn't sure about JCC." These are the types of randomness things that they get that, no matter how hard we try to communicate with students, we don't know what they think they need to know. And the last one is a real quick interaction between student and the advocate. Will there be, will there be a list of supplies needed for any classes that I may need to see in order to be prepared when I go to class on the first day? Also, will there be an orientation to figure out where my classes may be around the building? Also, when is the first day? I know that's a dumb question, and I hate asking, but I happen to forget. The advocate replied back, "Hi, Austin. This is a great question. For your first day, you just need your textbooks and a pen and paper. Your instructors will let you know on the first day of classes if there are any other materials you will need. The JCCC bookstore can help you find your books, and it's located on the first floor of the Student Center. And if you'd like an individual class tour of the buildings where your classes are located, you can call the Welcome Center and schedule one," and he gave contact information. "Our Cav leaders give these tours, and they would be happy to show you around. If you have any more questions, don't hesitate to email or call me. We're glad you're here at JCCC." So this is the level of engagement where these students, we know that they have a hard time connecting with our campus, and we have a lot of tremendous departments who serve students well, but it's when they land there. And so our success advocates are helping students land where our department specialists are. So thank you for your commitment to the success advocates as well.
Trustee Lindstrom?
First of all, I appreciate Randy not using my name for that email.
It's going to be Austin now.
The numbers, impressive numbers that you gave us for the metro rate, are they coming at someone's, another institution's expense? Or are they coming, as I would, I would hope that they're coming, just a concerted effort on our part to market the institution?
Yeah, that's a tough question. I think what we'd have to do is a deeper dive on what programs that they're enrolled in. If they're enrolled in programs that are non-competitive across state lines, so maybe those are the students who always wanted to be in culinary and they couldn't take them there, but now they can afford it, that would be example of that. If it's a student who's like, "Well, I drive to Johnson County for work every day, and I'm going to take English and psychology," and I could have taken it at home, then that might be part of their choice as well. So the, was there an expense elsewhere would be hard for us to evaluate, but those would be examples of how it could have been.
If I can add to that, I was speaking to a student this past week. She was here simply because our programs were better, our instructors were superior. That's what brought her to Johnson County.
And prior to that, was price a consideration for her?
Absolutely. I asked her about the metro rate. I said, "Does that, does that make much of a difference to you?" And she was like, "Oh, yeah." She was thrilled with that. I mean, keep in mind that we're last to the game here in this metro rate deal. KCK has been offering this. You know what UMKC is doing. You've got regional universities in Kansas offering classes for very, very little. It's really kind of fascinating. And so, and you've got community colleges that offer tuition breaks for, I guess you can say, continuous states as far away as, I believe, New Mexico. So it's how you interpret this, this metro rate. I think it's a huge thing. Randy's been promoting this, and we've done a very, very good job. We hadn't, didn't rush into it, but we did a very good job of getting this thing laid out, and it seems to be effective.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Oh, Randy, how long have you been here?
It was a year and a half on Tuesday.
He's counting.
He's not counting the days. Thanks, Randy. Randy's our senior most lightning-rounder today, so thank you very much. A couple points here. If, and pull these out of your report, the Collaboration Center. If you head east down the hall, you'll see our new Collaboration Center. We are extremely excited about this. Kristy McWard and her leadership, we already have over 30 different events and activities planned for the space. And I'll give you a couple examples of this. You know, that space is meant to be a place for, to be catalyst for projects and to benefit this college and our students. For example, our Performing Arts Series group will be meeting with folks from the Cosmosphere, and they'll be talking about a collaboration. We're hosting the International Education and International Relations Council of Kansas City. Our English department will host a Great Books series. We'll be doing TED Talks types of things in that space. Our Computer Science Group will host Girls Who Code. And our Kansas Studies Department will be exploring Southeast Kansas film with a panel discussion. We also look forward to the exciting collaborations directly, that will directly benefit our students, launched by our Business and Technology Division's External Advisory Board. So this is a great addition to the campus. Thank you for your support. Our college recently received the prestigious Scholarships in Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics grant from the National Science Foundation, and that totaled $644,760. The majority of these funds will be allocated for scholarships. That's about $432,000. These will be distributed over a five-year period to 30 students. This is all about promoting careers in the STEM field. Recipients must demonstrate an interest to transfer to a university for a bachelor's in STEM and have a documented financial need. Beth Edmonds, who's Chair of the Math Department and also the former Head of Ed Affairs, and Sunitha Menon, who is the Science Resource Center Coordinator, were the project leads. An all-star scholarship selection committee is ready to go, and we'd like to give special thanks to Melinda Bryant Smith for her hard work and Anthony Farnaro for making this grant work. So it's a great accomplishment, a pat on the back for the college. Another announcement is that we've received two, we have two recipients here of the State of Kansas Technology Internship Grant Awards. Gretchen Thum, an instructor in Journalism and Media, and Barbara Millard, an instructor in Marketing Management, both will have the opportunity to increase their knowledge of real-world advertising and social media. These grants are being matched, and this is a requirement of those grants, by an in-kind contribution from VML Advertising in Kansas City, Missouri. This is a great opportunity for Gretchen, Barbara, and ultimately, our students. We also like to welcome our new international faculty for the fall semester. We're so fortunate, Johnson County Community College, to be able to host visiting scholars from around the world. We have six visiting professors from Pakistan funded by a U.S. Embassy grant from Karachi, Pakistan. We are the only community college in the country that took this on. And we were selected because we're one of the best when it comes to this type of thing. So from Sukar IBA in Pakistan, that's the name of the school, we have Mr. Ishfakwe Abasi, who will be teaching English, Dr. Zarqa Borno, math, Dr. Fida Chong, distance education, Mr. Imran Khan will be doing assessment here, Mrs. Suraam Memmon, English, and Ms. Shiraz Ishmaul, early childhood development. This is a group that's using our college as kind of like a model as they create a community college in Pakistan. Their presence, whenever you have an international scholar here, it enriches us all. We also have a visiting professor from Northwestern Polytechnic University in Xi'an, China. This is Ms. Lina Gia. She is the 26th faculty member from NPU to teach at Johnson County Community College. That's commendable. Now, lastly, we'd like to talk a little bit about Professional Development Days. I'd like to thank Karen Martley and her team for pulling off a great week of professional development opportunities. It's been absolutely fantastic, a super-great vibe, I think, throughout the campus. But I'm going to talk about specifically one thing that we did with regards to our large in-service presentations. You know, historically, we've always done one big one in Yardley Hall. This year, because Yardley is under some renovation, we had three different sessions. And you know, it was kind of interesting because this directly pertains to the Engagement Study, which of course is a survey of all the people who work here at the college. And you know, that study revealed that we had some work to do in a couple of areas. One was the trust of upper management, and that we also needed to do a better job of communicating how people fit in here as it relates to where the college is going. So we thought we'd take advantage of this in-service, this in-service process to focus on those issues. And so I'm going to give you a very abbreviated overview of what we did, which took about 45 minutes. And I'm going to do that in about 45 seconds. And then we're going to, and I'm setting up a video that we're going to show you that we also shared with everybody in attendance at those. The video is a couple minutes long. First of all, Dr. Corb, in every session, reviewed the Engagement Study results and also took us through a list of initiatives that were launched over the last three years. This list was significant. It ranged from getting the Aquip process, Program Review and Strategic Planning, to where they needed to be, to cutting 3.8 million in salary and benefits, to launching wellness initiatives, as well as a Facilities Master Plan, a Budget Process Revision, and planting the seeds for the next 50. And that is just a small sample of what Judy put up on the board. Overall, we accomplished a lot, which is a credit to everyone here at the college and to you, our trustees, as well. But so many initiatives can lead to something called initiative fatigue. You know, they make people kind of wonder, is there a rhyme or reason to all these things? And how do they come together? And where do they fit in? So in an attempt to address these very important issues, and also to respond to a challenge given to me by Dr. Corb, and to put these into the context of what we have to do to make our college be the very best in the country, I identified four cornerstones, tenants, foundations, or you can call them pillars, that underscore this pursuit. For example, and I'm just going to read a couple sentences of what I would read across these four, these four pillars. The first one was service. "Our number-one priority is to serve the students who invest their time, money, and hopes, dreams in us. This is about taking that extra step and putting students first." And we then talked a little bit about, about the importance of service. The second point was relevance. "Our students deserve the best opportunity to achieve success that we can provide. If what we do in our campus, in our classrooms, labs, or workshops isn't relevant, we are not helping our students succeed in the world." Now, I'd like to ask trustees to face each other. I'm just, I'm just kidding. So we did this exercise.
You have forgotten who's in charge here, don't you?
We did these exercises where everyone in the room was asked to turn to the person next to you and talk about ways in which they made, which they contributed to service and made relevance an important issue here on our campus. And it was fascinating, the kind of buzz that went across the room. And then afterwards, we would share a couple of those. So we'll pick it up on point number three. This is accountability, third pillar. "It is our responsibility as stewards of public funds who are on the receiving end of a sizable investment by Johnson County property owners to ensure that we are living up to our part of the deal, as well as living up to the students' investments of their dollars, hopes, and dreams in us." And lastly, and the most important one, and Trustee Musel, you mentioned this earlier, it's the people. "We cannot be the best community college if we don't have the best people working together to make it happen. We must invest in our people. We will become the best community college when we are the best place to work, or better put, the best place to serve." And then we would have everyone face the person next to them, and again, talk about ways that they've addressed accountability and also how they valued the people who work here. The fact is, the fact is that we do all of these things here every day. The people who work here are the heroes who make it happen. Thanks to their efforts, this college is always on the cusp of being the best community college in the country. We are an outstanding and definitely among the leading community colleges, and that's for sure. So I wanted to take you through that to put this video in the context, so it'll make a little bit more sense to you when you see it. So if we can get this video up and running.
We all have a vision for what we want Johnson County Community College to be. There's something powerful about that. It means we're passionate. It means we're invested in the future. But in order for us to be the best, we need to unify that vision. Today is the start of that. It's a chance for us to define our path forward together. Surprisingly, that begins by going back to why we got into this. We're making sure everything we do benefits one person, the student. After all, the student invests in us, invests time and money, invests hopes and dreams. We need to make sure the service we provide aligns back to that. How do we do that? Well, it starts with our service. We'll integrate our academic offerings and student resources. We'll identify and implement practices that have proven results. And we'll expand our student learning strategies. We will provide a higher level of service. It's what our students deserve. But service in and of itself is not enough. We need to maintain relevance. And in order to achieve that, we need to stay future-focused. We're working on building the best community college in the country. We need to think beyond the next 10 years. We need the vision to see what's ahead for the next 50. Being the best isn't easy. That's where accountability comes in. It takes owning all of our roles. It takes a relentless commitment to performance. It takes the right outcomes. It's about delivering on our promise to the students in an effective and efficient way. The good news is, we're already a step ahead. We have the best people working here. Now it's on us to make sure we collaborate. Let's challenge each other. Let's invigorate our work environment. Let's not be afraid to pat each other on the back. By investing in each other, in turn, we'll be investing in our students. We know we can be the best. And today, we will start to prove it.
Hey, Chris, is that on, is that up on the website? Not yet. So eventually, we'll get that on the website. And I'd like to thank Chris for getting this video together, and also Dr. Corb, who really spearheaded this whole effort during the in-service. So thank you very much, Judy, and we hope you like it.
I think that was outstanding. Very well done, very creative, attention-getting. And the hardest thing to do is grab the attention of people like me, or maybe other people on this campus who think they already kind of got it, and put that together so that they think maybe I don't got it all. So I think that probably did it. I'm excited about the fact that you had good discussions during in-service. Any other comments from my trustees? Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to make a comment regarding the Collaboration Center, which I really believe hits the relevance piece of what we're talking about. I had the opportunity to host a retired businessman on campus today who is a new member to the foundation. And he's, he'll celebrate his 91st birthday next week. And when we went to the Collaboration Center and he began to look at the space and the diagram, and Dr. Sobchak, you had mentioned that in the orientation today, he just, he just went, wow. If I would have had this opportunity, starting up my business, who knows where it could have gone or what we could have been. So it's just one little snippet of a testimony, testimonial, of a retired businessman who we might think is over the hill, but he just saw all kinds of possibilities with that, with that facility. And so I would like to just thank the trustees and the staff for having the vision to say, hey, look, we need to approach this teaching-learning exchange differently today than we have in the past. And I just, for one, without seeing day-one operation, believe that's going to be a tremendous opportunity for us to enhance the image of this college.
Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Sobchak?
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Old business, there's really not old business, but a couple things that I want to mention. First of all, on Saturday, many of us attended the services for Ben Craig to celebrate his life and thank him for really contributions in every charity, in every civic group, in every Chamber of Commerce, in every hospital across this county, really across the state of Kansas and regionally. When you, you look back at his resume, as I had a chance to do before I did a tribute at my Rotary Club, he was YMCA, YMCA's Man of the Year in Kansas City, Kansas, when he was working in Kansas City, Kansas. He was on the Jackson County, Jackson County Sports Authority. He was the president of the Kansas Bankers Association. He was a delegate to the American Bankers Association. And he did incredible things for this college. He spearheaded the bond issue that passed in 1968 to build a college in the middle of nowhere at a cost that was just stupid, to spend that much money on this many acres in the middle of nowhere. But Ben had the vision to do that. He would be the first to tell you it wasn't him by himself, but he will be missed in this community. And it was, it was a pleasure to be there and help, not a pleasure, but an honor to go celebrate his life. Second thing, yesterday, we celebrated three more people on the Wall of Honor. Darwin Lawyer, Lyndy Robinson, and Bob Prater were selected by that process to have their photos up on the wall out in the hallway here. Please go look at those if you have, and it was a packed house. And it was, it's really enjoyable to honor people and to see them with their families, their grandchildren, their peers, their friends, and all of them spoke to you about the teamwork it took to, for any success that they had here at the college or otherwise. There being no other old business, I know of no new business. So we will go to reports from board liaisons, and Dennis, we'll finally get to you, Dr. Arjo, for the Faculty Association, ready for Minds Full of Mush to show up in your classrooms.
Yes, heading into the final days of PDD, it's always an exciting time. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to the board. I always appreciate that. I have a couple things I will touch on. First, let me take this opportunity to both acknowledge and express my appreciation for the letter I received from Chair Musel regarding the FA's resolution about the KACC. We appreciate very much the thoughtful response and the clear thought that went into what we had to say, and we look forward to future discussions on that topic. I look forward to hearing what Dr. Cook has to say in his report in just a bit. Secondly, I want to say a little bit about the Facilities Master Plan and the board retreat on Saturday. I was not involved in that personally until the very end, when I took over from Ron and caught the last few meetings. caught the last few meetings. It was clear that faculty was involved from the beginning and there was robust faculty representation, so I do want to acknowledge and express my appreciation for that. We are very excited to see this kind of thought going into such a substantial investment into the college, into the physical campus, and we are very excited to be a part of that. On several occasions, some concerns have been expressed by faculty who might be impacted by some of the initiatives, so we look forward to continued faculty involvement with whatever initiatives go forward as we start to get into more detailed planning on all of that. I do want to touch on something that came out at the board retreat, a comment or something that was said in response to a question, I believe this was by interim dean Richard Fort, about how if our facilities and some of the career tech areas are not what we might want them to be, those remain very robust, successful, popular programs, and his answer was the faculty. That we have quality people teaching these things, making the best of the facilities we do have, and who would doubtlessly be able to make sure the students get the most of whatever comes down the pike. So, this morning, at our faculty meeting, I spoke, Dean Jim Lane of RS County Social Science spoke, Dr. McLeod spoke in our various ways about the responsibilities of full-time faculty above and beyond being exceptional in the classroom. And among those is precisely taking responsibility for growing programs, developing curriculum, keeping current, current in, current in our disciplines. So, I just want to stress the importance of faculty to this ongoing initiative to develop new facilities, that without full-time faculty, we really will not get the most out of those new facilities. So, I appreciate, we always appreciate the support and investment we get, but I do want to stress that part of that process is always going to have to involve the faculty, and nothing is not, but I just want to put that out there. So, that's about that. One last thing, one of the things we always do as we wind up this first week when we're all back, a longstanding tradition, the Faculty Association hosts the party. We're going to do that tomorrow. It will be, as always, at the Queer Falls, Falls Clubhouse across the way. All the campus community is invited. Starts at four, food arrives around five. Hope to see a lot of you there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That is, that is a good time to get to know faculty members and watch you guys interact from all areas of the campus. So, if the trustee has an opportunity to go, please take advantage.
You're very welcome. We love to have you.
Questions, Dr. Cook?
Thank you, trustee chair. Dr. Arjo, in your reference to Mr. Fort, I guess what I was impressed with in his comment when asked about the programs, and he, he made, I thought, a really strong comment that supports what you're saying in terms of, we just don't create laborers here. They, we partner with the Gen Ed classes, and we expect our students to be participants in Gen Ed as well. And I really believe that not, you know, when you asked about the film and say, we're the best, I, I, I get a little nervous about anybody saying they're the best because I'm an advocate of best gets in the way, good gets in the way of excellence. If we think we're pretty good, I don't have to improve tomorrow. And, but otherwise, I thought the film was terrific. But, but that, I think, sets us aside a little bit, I think, from the other colleges and certainly the tech schools in this state, about the commitment and the partnership our CTE program has with Gen Ed and the whole faculty. So, I appreciated your comment, Dennis.
Well, thank you, and I, I would always stress that. I mean, I teach philosophy, which is about as far away from welding as you might think you could get. At least some presidential candidates thought so, if you recall. We need more welders than fewer philosophers. But I always like to point out and stress that no one is just what they do in their job. They're voters, they're neighbors, they're part of the community. All of that takes place in a cultural setting that has a history, that deals with issues that go back and come up, and creating people who can engage in that whole range of life is just absolutely essential to what we do, no matter what program they, they come here for.
So, as you advocate, that's really not a welding machine, it just appears to be a welding.
Welding does come up. There isn't a philosopher who actually doesn't teach. He's got a PhD vice philosophy, but he actually makes his living fixing things, doing those. He sees a complete continuity between philosophy and producing things with his hands.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Look forward to another good semester with great faculty.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our Johnson County Research Community, Johnson County Education Research Triangle, and trustee Lindstrom is our liaison to that group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, I appreciate your comments regarding Ben. If I might, just add another comment. In my almost 40 years in Johnson County, I don't know of anyone else who is more respected than Ben Craig, so very appreciative of your comments about Ben. We have not met, the, the Johnson County Education Research Triangle has not met since our, our last meeting and since my last report. We do, however, meet on Tuesday, September 20th at 7:30 a.m. at KU Edwards Campus. Sales tax revenues are on par to, to exceed last year's revenue, approximately 4%. And for the, anyone out there who wants more information on the Johnson County, J-Cert, the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, I would encourage you to go to the website and get some more additional information. And that website is jocotriangle.com. It's J-O-C-O-T-R-I-A-N-G-L-E.com, jocotriangle.com. And they're doing great work, but hopefully, I'll have a, a more extensive report after our next meeting.
Thank you. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. KACC will have their next meeting on September 9th and 10th at Seward County Community College in, in the southwest corner of our state. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend. I have an event the previous night, Thursday evening, and, and in order to get there for a meeting, begin, I, beginning, I think, at 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, somewhere in there. It's, it's more than a two-hour drive to liberal Kansas, and so, we'd have to leave about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, and, and I don't have enough sunflower seeds to eat to leave at 3:00 o'clock in the morning. But in any event, trustee Lindstrom was planning to attend, and I, I think he has a conflict now as well, so.
Perhaps, I still might make it.
Unfortunate, well, I hope, I hope you can make it. I, I think it's important that we have a presence there at this next meeting. What I would say, and Dr. Arjo, thank you for your response to trustee Musel's letter, while we haven't had a public discussion of this board, and perhaps we can, if you have any questions, we can talk about that this evening. And I, and I think, Dr. Sobchak, you, you have said so well that I'm not sure what success the executive director of KACC, no matter how good he or she may be, could have, because as you pointed out, there's a tremendous diversity of the 19 colleges, from a handful of them that probably struggle monthly with survival financially and enrollments. And yet, those community colleges are a significant part of their community's economic development and economic stature. And yet, we're, we're, we're kind of the big elephant in the room in that we're the largest, and as I said earlier, we have almost 100,000 people on and off our campus, perhaps, at least 80,000 in a year, and hopefully around, my ignorance will really show now, but hopefully around 21,000 students this fall rather than 19. But in any event, and then with our continuing, you had, you know, roughly 30,000 to 35,000 students on the campus, but the needs are different. And so, we've spent a lot of time discussing what role does a college like Johnson County Community College play in the state network? And as I've been on that board and served as its chair, I, I took the position that we shouldn't come to this association for the benefit of our individual college, but how can we advance the community college movement in the state and make the whole state stronger? However, when that, when those strategies become at the expense of an individual college, then I think that college really needs to review our role and our efforts that we put into that. I don't take any different position at the National Association that I belong to. While we expect to learn a lot from our colleagues at the national level and at KACC to improve our college, I don't go to ACCT looking at what can I get to make JCCC better? How can I understand the national movement? How can I understand the movement that tuition should be reduced or free? And I, I hesitate to use free because I, I don't think tuition is free, but how, how can we make, how can we lower the tuition costs to students? And through scholarships, and by the way, at the national level, we have almost 300 programs nationwide where students at their respective colleges are attending college at either no tuition or very low tuition. And a lot of that comes through scholarships, a lot of that comes through individual donations that people have for certain programs. And so, we try to balance what our role is with the state level and, and what it does to our, to our college. I think Dr. Sobchak has outlined very well the challenges that we face, and we, we will be traveling to Topeka on Monday to meet with, with Linda Fund. And I, and I really, as, as Dr. Sobchak has indicated, I really think Linda's in a very, very difficult position as the executive director to try to be all things to all people. I was interested in Mr. Carter's report that at K-Bor, KACC has taken the position that they're going to deal primarily with the funding issue and not get involved with other issues. That's why I'd kind of like to be at liberal to see just exactly what that detail may be. I do not sit on the executive committee any longer, so I, I don't have privy to that information. But trustee Musel, I'd be happy to try and respond to any questions that board members have, and if you'd like to have any discussion about where we go forward. What we have outlined and what we will visit with Linda about is that if, if we continue to have state strategies that really, the mosquito bites are getting bigger, and if, if they continue to have strategies that are going to impact the effectiveness of our college, getting at these four pillars that, that we've just talked about, and also our key performance indicators, then, then perhaps, we need to make the decision that we will no longer participate. That decision has not been made yet, but we'll be certainly looking at how we go about this year and what strategies KACC has, and I certainly would be interested in any input any of you have.
Well, I, I'm going to open it up to, for discussion on that, on that point. We've talked about this for quite a while, and then, and Dennis, your, your letter with the Faculty Association Resolution was another piece of that puzzle, and, and I may have either overstepped my bounds or been somewhat premature, thinking I understood where the entire board was when I wrote back on that letter, because we've had snippets of discussion over time. But I want to make sure today that other board members that, that have any comments about KACC and what our role should be, have the opportunity to do that so that we do have that discussion. I think we're clearly on a path where we are emphasizing our concern and our temperature level is going up, and we are worried that our contributions here and our relationship building is being overwhelmed by other policies of other community colleges, and, and that is a very difficult step to take in, you know, when we, when we're dealing with legislature. But it's important for us to continue to look at it, and I think we're scrutinizing it more carefully than ever. Other comments?
I'll.
Trustee Ingram?
Absolutely. I'll go ahead and make one because I had expressed just some questions about this, and I appreciate the scrutiny. I think it's necessary. I was not, not in support of what is happening, and I appreciate the, the plan as we have suggested that would perhaps move forward. So, I just wanted to make sure that I had not missed something and that, you know, we all had the opportunity to just listen and discuss, so thank you.
Other comments?
I would anticipate that when we get to the point, and we, we've indicated that we would certainly give them advanced notice because we are a significant part of the operation, but that I would expect that we would probably take a public vote to whether we stay in or stay out as a board. And so, I would expect that as we move down the trail here, we'll let Linda know of our intent, but that we'll, we'll come back as a, as a board to take that particular action, I would guess.
That would make sense to me. Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate trustee Cook's comments and work on that, that association. I've had differences, as this board knows, with KACC, but on balance, I think it's been a not unproductive or unuseful relationship, and I think we've benefited. I do have concerns that there is a growing movement to come after Johnson County or local control of community colleges, and that we're a focal point of that energy and attention. So, I, I welcome the scrutiny. I do think that KACC is a useful relationship for us. I support our membership in it. Subject to, I think that the rest of our sister institutions need to understand that we're all in this together, and any kind of lobbying power that they have, I'd like to think is stronger with us than without us. I've commented to you, trustee Cook, that I'd rather be inside the tent than out, and I, I, my parents are both not from Johnson County. My dad was born in Gardner, but grew up in Leavenworth County, my mother in Rooks County, and I grew up in Douglas, Lawrence. So, I, I can appreciate, and I have family throughout the rest of the state. I know that as hard as it may be for us, many of the rest of the state institutions or sub-state institutions are struggling greatly, and my heart goes out to them, and I certainly don't want to leave them. I just, I think it's a useful relationship, but with all due respect, if we are contributing a sizable contribution financially, then I'm not saying we should get exactly that proportionate of a vote or say, but I think we should give, we should be given weight when, when we, when we speak up.
Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am a little tentative about when KACC says, we're just going to talk about funding and not policy issues, because that's our bread and butter. When, when you talk about funding and looking at coming after Johnson County, the conversation about a statewide mill levy, guess who pays for that? When, when these schools aren't losing money for losing students, you know, I think we really need to look at the fundamental, fundamental purpose of community colleges, to educate the population, not to be a jobs program. You know, in, in some communities where there are three community colleges in a county, for instance, or close, that, close, close to it, you know, what is the, what is the purpose? What purpose do we serve but to educate, not to just be an employer? So, I, I do think that we have to watch out, if we're talking about funding issues, we have to be very vigilant. I don't think we're anywhere close to making a decision like that, but I think it is, it is good for us to be, be very aware and to be involved, to maintain that, that engagement. And when, when we're all in Topeka, when we go to Topeka for the, the community college days, to make that point that we're, we're paying attention, that we're, we're watching what's going on, and we play an important role. So, I appreciate both of your involvement on that board and for keeping an eye out for us.
Well, I think if I could respond to that. From a staff viewpoint, whenever the conference gets together, it probably ends up talking about who's going to play whom in football and scheduling, and that always is an issue. When KACC gets together, the last item usually ends up with money. And we've tried to get over that. We have created the Leadership Development Program to try and help grow our own potential leaders. We've tried to put in place a trustee development piece. We tried to deal with issues, Stephanie, that don't deal just with money and with who we're going to play in football, but, but it always comes down to that, and so, we've made a little bit of progress.
Dr. Sobchak?
I can add, since I've been involved with the KACC since the 90s, ultimately, money is always the, the top issue. Other community colleges across the state aren't nearly as blessed as we are to have the local resources that really contribute greatly to the success of this college. So, what they, and this year, when they're saying funding, what that means is they will do whatever they can to protect what community colleges get across the state. And that is fantastic because together, we do have greater strength. But I will share with you, and I feel totally confident in saying this, that when it comes time to evaluate legislative initiatives launched by the KACC, the welfare of Johnson County Community College or Johnson County is not exactly a number one on their list. And so, this is something that, keeping in mind that we also contribute mightily to their organization, it, it, it kind of makes it a little interesting. So, I think when Dr. Cook and I visit on Monday, we'll be laying out some issues and some discussion points by which we'll be able to better evaluate our relationship during the upcoming, upcoming year. And I have to commend this group. This has been talked about since the 90s, and we've never had the institutional will to even confront it. So, it's, it's, it's great that we're having this discussion now, and we'll be looking forward to perhaps some constructive discussion further on with the, with the organization.
Anything further? If not, we'll move on to the liaison report from our Johnson County Community College Foundation. Trustee Ingram?
We actually did not meet this past month, but We actually did not meet this past month, but I have been advised, or to advise you all, have a special reception to honor Adam Hamilton, who is the Johnson County An of the Year. You all should have received some information at your desk this evening about that. There will be a reception at the home of Brad and Libby Bergman. And as you will remember, Brad is the president of the Johnson County Community College Foundation Board. They are using this special opportunity to share with the Church of the Resurrection members about the importance of not only their pastor winning this award, but also the important role in Johnson County Community College and what it does in our community. So anyway, we hope that you will consider joining this evening on September the 8th. So thank you.
If not, we're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of routine items and consensus items that are typically considered collectively in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and discussed and voted upon separately. Are there any items in tonight's consent agenda that anybody would like to pull and consider separately? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
So moved?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no. Motion carried unanimously. We have no executive session tonight, so we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Second. That was rather enthusiastic.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those no. We are adjourned. Thank you all for sticking with us. Long meeting.